To our public testimony session. We're starting a little bit early. There's a couple of sort of rules to the game I want to talk about. And I also have a letter from Senator Golden that he asked us to read at this meeting, so we're getting started a little bit early. Again, I apologize for my voice for this first part. I'm actually going to turn around and talk to y'all. If you have handouts that you want the board members to get, or if you have any kind of videos or anything, you can email them to Jennifer and she'll make sure that we get them. The morning session and this session both are being recorded. They are actually linked on our website Oregon State Marine Board right now, so if you want to go back tonight because you can't hear what I or member Lambert are saying, you can go back and play the recording and figure out what we're talking about. We're gonna be have, I think about, eight people signed up to speak via computer or telephone. We're gonna have them go first. Then we're gonna start calling names in the order that you've signed up. Everybody's gonna get three minutes to speak. Jennifer's gonna be our timekeeper. Anything else I need to cover? Okay, so with that, I'm gonna read the letter from Senator Golden. "To the Oregon State Marine Board. Thanks very much for taking considerable time needed to come to our valley for a close-up examination of this issue and citizen perspective on it. This speaks to your understanding of how vital the Rogue River is to Southern Oregon, quality of life and the economy. We are united in our love for this river. Pretty much all of us also share an understanding that this public resource should be available for a range of uses that reflect a range of different values and perspectives. I believe we'd all agree that your task is to find the balance that best serves human experience of the river, along with its long-term capacity for supporting fish and wildlife. I also think we agree on this. Yours is not a decent task. My first reflection on multiple uses of the Rogue came in 1975, the first time my raft floated through Blossom Bar and Devil's Staircase Rapid to bow to bow the so-called mailboat from Gold Beach, the first commercial jet boat I have seen. It brought an abrupt end to a deeply quiet week on the wild and scenic section of the river. And I'll admit that I didn't enjoy that moment. I carried a distaste for these big lab boats to my first years guiding professionally on the road, where I heard countless customers complain about the jarring re-entry into a world of high-power engines. Over the years, I came to understand that jet boats were how a lot of people wanted to visit the river and the only way that some of them took. Along with most rafters, drift boaters, and kayakers, I came to accept that there was room for all of us on the lower river, that that's central to what public use needs. That's why you're not hearing a clamor from longtime users to roll back jet boat use on the 132 miles from the mouth of the river to Two Bell Park. The Rogue is, in every sense, a multi-use river, with commercial jet boats as one of its primary users, and nobody I know expects that to change. With that in mind, I ask the board to give strong consideration to the broadly supported proposal to promote motorized use of the Rogue River to craft with engines rated 15 horsepower or less from Two Bell Park to the volume just camp that impounds lost pre-lick. The weight of the evidence accumulated negative impacts for more powerful motors, including the proponents of research data including disruption of invaluable fish runs, sedimentation of vital gravel beds, accelerated shore erosion, and stories from swimmers of frightening nervousnesses because of line-of-sight limitations. All of this points to a very substantial cumulative threat to our river and its users. Endorsing current and expanding use of the large jet boats above Two Bell Park would seem to starkly violate the precautionary principle within guard to safeguard public use and sustain viability of this extraordinary public resource." "And while some may dismiss the aesthetic element of public entertainment of the river element, a balanced, multiple-use policy should reflect a kind of balance of access to enjoyable river experiences. In this case, we have a symmetry. Commercial-grade jet boats definitely compromise the river experience for some motor, for some non-motorized users, while the reverse is almost never the case. That has to be factored into circular of offering the best experience possible to the most users possible. There is, in fact, room for all of us, with all of our different preferences to enjoy the Rogue River. Let's affirm a right of commercial jet boats to use the lion's share of the 132 miles below Two Bell Park and reserve the 25 miles from the park to Lost Pre-lick for non-motorized use and river craft at 15 horsepower or less. That would be sensible, genuine, and sustainable multiple use for this magnificent river. Thank you sincerely for your attention and again, coming to Jackson County to thoroughly consider the risk of this future." Senator Jeff Golden, Chair, Oregon Senate, but yeah, natural of this place and wildfire. And with that, we will start with our online folks testifying. Jennifer, who do we have?
Matthew Richardson.
Okay, so Matthew Richardson? Go ahead, admit yourself.
Yeah, everybody see me?
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Matthew Richardson. I'm a swimmer, floater, rafter, small jet boater, and fisherman. The Rogue River has been part of my life as long as I can remember. It is deeply woven into who I am. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Prohibiting jet boats or any other user group on the Upper Rogue River would be detrimental to our community, Oregon's shared heritage, and all river users. Instead of excluding one group, we should seek solutions that ensure everyone can enjoy the river safely and responsibly. My hope is for my children and future generations to have the same opportunities to experience the Rogue River that I have. Communities thrive when we embrace diversity and find ways for all to coexist, not when we push out a minority to cater to the preferences of a few. In fact, the data shows that many users were unaware that there was any conflict at all. It's a small group with the time and resources to advocate for exclusion driven by their own desire for exclusive use. The Upper Rogue Guardians, among their members, a riverfront property owner, are attempting to take public rights for themselves. This is wrong. Everyone should have the ability to enjoy the river, not just wealthy landowners. It appears the main issue the petitioners have is with commercial use. Other users, like small jet boats, have been drawn into it. Small jet boats are a low-impact way to experience the river, the majority of which are responsible stewards of the river. Shady Cove mentioned time and time again, high-speed jets. This is a charge description meant to invoke an emotional response when the majority of jet boats operate at the speed of a school zone, 25 miles an hour. Here's a quick example with something we can all understand. This is a small car. This is also a small car, yet they invoke a much different response. Small jet boats have been present on the Rogue River since at least 1968. Unfortunately, bad actors get attention while good behavior goes unnoticed. I urge the Marine Board to regulate bad behavior, not the boats themselves. The Rogue River is a public resource and it is vital that we manage it in a way that balances the needs and rights of all users. Excluding jet boats would only create division and inequality. Instead, let's embrace the shared stewardship, working together to ensure that all Oregonians can continue to enjoy this magnificent river now and for generations to come. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you for coming out today. Who else do we have available online?
Andrew Archer is on.
Who is?
Andrew Archer is on.
Okay, Andrew Archer. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide input regarding river use on the Upper Rogue River today. My name is Andy Archer. I'm a third-year law student at the University of Oregon and the Vice President of the Red Sides, which is a Trout Unlimited chapter which spans from the southern Willamette Valley to the border of California. Prior to beginning law school, I spent over four years living in Ashland and working in the local fishing economy in Southern Oregon. I personally spent countless days floating, fishing, and observing steelhead and salmon on the Upper Rogue, but through my occupation as a booking agent for fly fishing operations, I booked hundreds of clients on fishing trips to the Upper Rogue. These were people who, like me, were drawn to this stretch of river for the cold, clean water, intact ecosystem, and quiet solitude of the Upper Rogue, not to mention its runs of anadromous fishes. Jet boat use on the Upper Rogue will damage essential spawning habitat and negatively impact native fish. Such native fish include the spring Chinook salmon, which has been petitioned for listing under the Endangered Species Act and could be listed at any time. Furthermore, wakes and hydraulic turbulence from jet boat use in the river dislodge sediment and can cover reds used by salmon and steelhead for spawning as well. A substantial concern to me personally is the incentive for jet boat users to alter the river channel to keep navigation pathways open, particularly during low-water events when fish are most vulnerable. Such alterations obviously destroy salmon spawning habitat. Jet boat use is also not safe on the Upper Rogue. The Upper River is very narrow and shallow in many sections, and there are a lot of blind corners. In addition, the Rogue has a large amount of other river users on any given day, including anglers, rafters, individuals floating on inner tubes, or even swimming in the river. Adding jet boats to this equation, I believe, will not be safe to those other river users, as well as those on the jet boats themselves. Backing away here for a moment, the Oregon State Marine Board serves Oregon's recreational boating public through, among other things, environmental stewardship and providing safe and enjoyable experiences for boaters. If jet boat use is to be permitted on the Upper Rogue, the Marine Board will fail their mission and in turn fail the river users of the state to which their agency was created to serve. In doing so, it will also harm the local economy by deterring other river users and enthusiasts from near and far from coming to Southern Oregon to experience the unique environment of the Upper Rogue. I request the Oregon State Marine Board to put a restriction on motors larger than 15 horsepower above Gold Hill on the Upper Rogue River. I urge you to not be yet another contributor to the downfall of our precious native fish and freshwater environments in the state of Oregon. Thank you for your time and the opportunity.
Thank you very much for coming out. Do we have any of our other online testifiers?
Jake Crawford.
Jake Crawford? Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Jake Crawford, and I've been a resident in Jackson County for the last 13 years. I enjoy the Rogue River for fishing, hiking around it, swimming. I also work in the fishing industry and help book fishing guides and outfords on the Rogue River to take people and experience this area. During my time in the Rogue Valley, I've also worked to help conserve and recover the native fish populations, not only in the Rogue but across the Northwest, which have experienced dramatic declines across their range. My focus in the Rogue River specifically was on efforts to develop conservation plans for sensitive spring Chinook salmon, Coho salmon, and more recently, steelhead, working with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and other state and government agencies and people who are working to try to recover and protect these populations to prevent their decline. These fish are ecologically important, they're culturally important, and economically important to the communities here in the Rogue Valley. And I know that you've heard a lot of information about this today and from the agency earlier this morning. So I just want to keep it short by sharing that I support efforts by the Oregon State Marine Board asking for reasonable regulation of jet boats in the Upper Rogue River. Anglers and other users have to make certain compromises in our fishing tackle, the seasons that we fish, the windows that we're able to go and target these fish so that we don't negatively impact them. And your ability to make reasonable regulations on other users is not exclusive to kicking anybody out. It's just all playing the part that we have to play to have a multi-use river and participate in a community together. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for coming out today. Do we have any of our other?
Mark Sherwood, I believe, is on.
Mark Sherwood? Mark Sherwood, are you out there?
Do you trouble?
Well, that was a name that wasn't on our list.
Mark Sherwood and Charles Gere.
Okay.
And there's one number 0642, I'm not sure who that was.
Okay, Charles or Mark, do you want to go?
Yes, this is Charles. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, good afternoon. My name's Charles Gere. I'm a resident of Talent who regularly floats and fishes the Upper Rogue River. I'm a small business owner here in the valley, and I volunteer for a few conservation organizations in Southern Oregon. The Upper Rogue River, as you're learning, above Gold Ray Dam site is a much smaller river than it is down around Grants Pass or near the estuary at Gold Beach. There are numerous places where it's impossible for jet boats to pass through without motoring over spawning reds. I've personally seen back channels in the river where I would go to watch spawning salmon every year that are now scoured out by boat motors and salmon no longer build reds there. It doesn't matter the time of year that boats motor through these areas for them to have a direct negative impact on anadromous fish spawning success. Jet boat wakes also erode stream banks by way of wave action. Over time, stream banks become destabilized to the detriment of streamside vegetation. You can see the effects on rivers like the Deschutes with significant large boat traffic. With the Upper Rogue being so much smaller, this wave action is having an accelerated effect. As we're trying to mitigate the effects of climate change on anadromous fish, it's more important now than ever that we do everything possible to have healthy streamside vegetation cooling the water. For me, the most important issue with jet boats in the Upper Rogue is safety. There are lots of blind corners and narrow channels in the Upper River, places where it's not wide enough for two boats to pass. Jet boats need to be up on plain in order to pass through these shallow areas. It's only a matter of time before a jet boat traveling through a side channel runs into a raft, kayak, or paddleboard. I've witnessed jet boats traveling on plain through side channels that are barely wider than their boat below Two Bell Park, setting a boundary at Rattlesnake Rapid or the bridge at Two Bell does not accurately reflect the nature of the river. The Rogue has a long history of jet boats, and I'm not advocating for removing them from the river entirely, far from it. Setting a boundary at the old Gold Ray Dam site or the town of Gold Hill still leaves well over 100 miles of river available to jet boats. I'm asking that you set aside roughly one-third of the river to floaters or outboard motors under 15 horsepower. Not every section of a river is appropriate for all uses, and the Upper Rogue is simply not appropriate for jet boat use. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Just one comment. Not sure who that was.
Yeah. You had mentioned 0642, that's my phone. I'm available to comment if now is the time.
Please give us your name and go ahead and testify. You've got three minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. Chair Jackson, Vice Chair Early and Members of the Board. My name is Dean Finnerty, and I'm an Oregon staff member at Trout Unlimited. Trout Unlimited is a nonprofit dedicated to conserving salmon, steelhead, and trout in their habitats. We have about 350,000 members and supporters nationally, and about 20 staff in Oregon that mostly work on projects to benefit fish, such as habitat restoration and fish passage. And specifically here on the Rogue, we have projects in the Rogue Basin such as stream inflow restoration deals in Little Butte Creek to benefit wild fish. I currently reside on the Umpqua River at Scottsburg, and I've been a licensed Oregon fishing guide since about 1998 and have worked on the Upper Rogue and other southwest Oregon rivers for approximately 24 years. My trips on the Upper Rogue are drift boat trips for one, two, or sometimes three anglers, and we fish primarily from the boat. However, there are some runs we'll get out of the boat and wade fish. My Upper Rogue trips have always targeted summer steelhead in months of September and October and sometimes into early November, depending on weather patterns and river flows. But during that period of time, the Upper River has good numbers of steelhead and also a lot of spring Chinooks that are spawning in along these gravel bars and shallow areas. And when I'm running my drift boat down through some of those sections of the river, it's actually difficult to do some seasons because there are so many spawning spring Chinooks that I'm trying to avoid disturbing them and their reds while they're actively spawning. EU's primary interest in engaging on this issue is to ensure protection of spawning habitat and water quality. The Upper Rogue is a really complex place for fish with various life stages for Pacific lamp prey, Coho salmon, spring Chinooks, steelhead, and resonant trout that are present during the summer boating season and into the fall. It does surprise me a bit that jet boats, especially the larger types of jet boats, are using this section of the river, and I worry about what may be happening to the resource. But I'm not a scientist, and I would therefore strongly encourage the State Marine Board to closely consider ODFW's input on this matter. They're the state's experts on this resource. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out today. Do we have any of our other?
Mary was on, but it looks like she's not anymore, so maybe she'll come back.
Is Mary Pulcini out there?
And then the?
John Pogue?
And Joel.
Or Joel Shepherd? Okay, so we'll come back and see if those folks come in at any other time. We're gonna start by calling the folks who've signed up. We're gonna call you in order. We're gonna call you up in pairs, so I'm gonna give out two names. And so if you come on up here, if you get called and somebody has already said pretty much what you wanted to say, you are welcome to say, hey, the gentleman in the blue shirt said what I was gonna say. Likewise, if you have submitted written testimony to us, we're reading it, we've read it, are going to, are going to read it. Comments will be up until the 16th of October, so if you're gonna submit something. So if you've already submitted stuff, we ask that you don't come and just read the same thing again. Give us something new to think about. And we, again, we are scheduled to be here till four, but we've got significantly fewer people signed up. So let's try to hear from everybody who wants to talk today. Our first two speakers are Steve Walzer and Bill Lovins.
And Laura, Mary just joined on the phone.
Okay, she'll, we'll put her on after Bill.
Okay.
I'm gonna stand if that's okay.
Perfect.
My name is Steve Walzer. I am a licensed guide here in the state of Oregon and have been a licensed guide for over 13 years in the state of Oregon and the state of California. I'm a citizen of Trail Oregon, and I have lived on the Rogue River continuously from 2000, throughout the year 2000 in either Shady Cove Trail or Eagle Point, either on or in view of the water. I can give you a little bit of insight as to the amount of usage of jet boats on this river and how it has increased over the last few years. When Rogue Jets started operating, it was a real new thing. And by the way, they are a very professional company. All my interactions with them have been nothing but goo. I don't particularly like it. I'll tell you, I don't like motors on any rivers. Even though I was a licensed captain in the San Joaquin drainage and on the San Joaquin drainage, the delta and the bay, and I've run plenty of jet boats I've operated in myself. What we're seeing now is because of this increased use through Rogue Jet, people have got the idea, wow, I can go out there and do this. And that has started an increased use more and more and more everywhere. I can talk to you about the fishery impact because I was the Director of the California Rivers Restoration Fund for almost 15 years. I rebuilt salmon and steelhead habitat all over the state of Oregon, and we were a very successful litigious agency on getting water rights and getting protections such as these to happen. I'm not gonna speak on any of that. You guys have a litany of information about how to protect the fish. God, I would think OD, or the Marine Board would care about that, and really look at that alone. I think that should be the end of this discussion. I spend time on the river. My son, who will speak today, does as well. Between the two of us, we spend about 400 days a year and have continuously done so, at least myself, since the year 2000 on the road. I'm out there every day. I see what's going on, most every day. I have an ear for it. I can hear coming at me. As I have, I was hoping to put some video up on the screen. I'm told I couldn't. It will be part of the comments I will make in a split second. Just this last year, it wasn't just a small jet. It was a very large boat, absolutely the size of their smaller jet boats that they were running, shooting up Trail Rapid just outside of Shady Cove, and it almost took me. I had to get out of the way. I heard it coming. He had to decelerate, come back around, and make it another pass because it almost took me out. I'm in a big raft, 14 feet. My seat's sit high. You can see my client's eye. Not a kid in a kayak this big. I'm glad to know all of your names. I am here to tell you that if you don't do something about this now, somebody's blood will be on your hands. And I'm glad to know each of your commissioner's name, so if you guys don't do something about this, I know who to blame. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lovins?
Yeah, my name is Bill Lovins. I've lived in Rogue Valley 70 years, my whole life, and experienced the Rogue River more than half of that. I'd like to talk to you about a completely different issue than what you've been exposed to to this point. And that is, and I gave you some handouts to look at. I apologize for not being able to do it electronically, but when land use mining first came to the state of Oregon, of Jackson County, kind of cluster zoned aggregate mining on a large area below Two Bell Bridge. That, I'm talking in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s. Most of that has ceased. But there's probably a total of 20 or more aggregate excavations that have been depleted and reclaimed. In 1996, December of 96 and January of 1997, Rogue experienced a significant flood event. That significant flood event actually caused an abulsion of three of these aggregate explosions. The largest being one that was owned by Oregon Department of Transportation and used to be part of I-5 when the material was mined. There's a stakeholders group that was formed soon after that. It involved public and private sector. We were really concerned that if we allowed this to continue, additional aggregate sources would be, become part of the river. The state pit was only about 12 feet deep, so we felt that that, we needed to stop there. So a public-private partnership, and included Oregon Department of Transportation, OWEB, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, and Division of State Lands, we hired a geomorphologist out of Denver, Colorado to come up with a plan to keep the river from taking over those other aggregate excavations. We applied and received over $1.3 million to do the planning and execution of this plan. It involved building stream barbs, bendway weirs, and an overflow structure, along with a lot of planning. Doing this type of thing not only involves the US Corps of Engineers, but also involves US Fish and Wildlife. The whole purpose of doing what we're doing, according to the geomorphologist out of Colorado, was that the ODOT pit would over time fill with gravel. Velocity in the river carries bed load. When that velocity decreases, the gravel is deposited. And that's what the end result of all this planning was. I provided a lot of the engineering plans to do this work. I can tell you that in addition to the $1.3 million of hard dollars, we had probably over $2 million in in kind and materials. I just want to show you the pictures. Rogue Jet Boats actually operates out of this ODOT pit. The plan was that that pit would fill with gravels and force the river back into its own channel. That's not happening because there were so many trips back and forth, and Mike Harper's testimony talked about how that jet boats can continue to scour out this. I have some pictures from this year at the back here. It actually shows much of the gravel being deposited in the ODOT pit, but also shows a large erosion on the bank that separates the captured ODOT pit with a 50 to 60-foot pit next to it. There's an enlargement here that shows that erosion.
So you have hit your three-minute mark.
Yeah.
I got her a little bit, so.
I could say.
If you have, if you have a. If you have, if you have a conclusion that you wanna make-
Well, I, I just wanna say that we did a predictive analysis if we did nothing. And that predictive analysis is if you look at. The OWEB completion report, it shows the evulsive path that the river would take if we did nothing. And that could result in probably the most catastrophic issue facing the Rogue River today. That the millions of tons of gravels that would need to fill these aggregate pits would rob. Streambed gravels upriver from this. We already have no recruitment of, of streambed gravels below, below Lost Creek Dam. Uh, our efforts. We actually won the Oregon Plan, which was for the enhancement of salmon and steelhead habitat in two thousand and two. I am really concerned that our efforts that we did back in the early two thousands are, are. Are being jeopardized.
Great. Thank you so much. And so we're gonna go back to our online testifiers. Mary Pulcini?
It's star six to unmute Mary.
She's there?
She's, she's there, but she's not unmuted.
Mary? Can you hear us?
Star six to unmute your phone, Mary.
All right, we hear you.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, you can hear me now?
We can hear you and you've got three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm sorry. All right, my name's Mary Pulcini and I live in Shady Cove on the river. I wanna start by saying, cause I've heard this so many times. I'm neither rich nor entitled and I honestly believe that this river is there to be shared by all, whether you live on it or not. From my yard on the river, I see multiple individuals and families, including fishermen, rafters, floaters, and paddleboarders, using the river on a daily basis. There is no doubt in my mind that these people would be in serious danger if the jet boats, mini jet boats, any jet boats were allowed on this portion of the river. This summer and my family and I almost became a statistic for the first time. On this river. We were kayaking down the river, enjoying the afternoon, when we heard in the distance the sound of a jet boat. We saw it coming, but he didn't see us. We waved frantically, threw our arms in the air, having a fit. He pretty much very close to about a point. He managed and quick flew over to the left and avoided us. In the end, we were left completely scared to death and that adventure was massively ruined. I will think twice before kayaking or, or rafting on the river if jet boats are allowed. In my opinion, you're just playing Russian roulette with life and I foresee multiple reckless and dangerous potential losses. This summer, there had been supposedly two, and I wanna say. Two mini jet boat incidents, including running into rocks near Penny Lane and Shady Cove. I wanna talk about these two because they're supposedly, it's the white and the red jet boat. Um, I, they're supposedly experienced drivers. Fortunately, no one was injured, but they sure could have been. The boulder and the rock pattern has not changed since their last trip up the river, so why did they crash? Who knows? We have no sheriff on the river to get incident reports, so how will we ever know? In addition, backwash from the jet boats jeopardize the integrity of our river, riverbank, including aquatic wildlife. Not to mention the noise pollution that the boats give off, very disruptive to those on the river. It's like listening to drag boats racing down, to drag cars racing down your street. In summary, I'm not opposed to a limited speed of ten to fifteen miles an hour. With that being said, I'm a strong opponent of using our God-given common sense in this situation. And that is what I'm asking the board to do. Please, no jet boats on this portion of the river. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So back to your testimony. We're gonna have Haley Martin and Chuck Huntington. And then after that will be Dale Penn and Cameron Wilson?
Hi, my name is Haley Martin. I am the Communications Manager for the Klam and Siskiyou Wildland Center, also known as KS Wild. I live in Talent, Oregon, and I use this section of the Upper Rogue River for rafting and kayaking myself. My comments are on behalf of Rogue River Keeper, a program of KS Wild with over four thousand supporters that works to protect the water quality of the Rogue River. I wanna first thank you all for coming up to Medford to hear testimony from people who deeply care about the Rogue River. As you can see, there's a lot of people in this room and in the community who deeply care about the Rogue and want to see safe recreation for all. We hope that you take our comments into consideration, not just for the actions and impacts that are happening right now, but to protect the values of the Rogue into the future. Protecting water quality and sustaining native fish depends on what we do right now, not waiting, as so often happens after the damage is done. I personally have experienced jet boats in this section of the river while I was kayaking. And I have felt concerns over not only my own safety and the disturbance of my own accessibility and that of others. But for the sustainability of the habitat for the native fish and aquatic species that rely on. This portion of the river due to the high speeds and maneuvers that the jet boats are doing in this shallow section of the Rogue River. Rogue River Keepers are requesting that the marine board not allow jet boats to operate in the Upper Rogue River upstream of Table Rock Road Bridge. And we support a fifteen horsepower limitation on all watercraft operating from the bridge to Lost Creek Dam. The operation of high-powered jet boats with their wakes and turbulence disrupts river ecosystems in ways that has negative impacts on the food web and the general river environment. In the past, this area has mainly been used for different types of non-motorized boating, guided bank, wade, and boat fishing. Hiking, bird watching, picnicking, dog walking, swimming, and is also just a peaceful place to enjoy the outdoors. These types of uses do not coexist well with high-powered jet boats. The public's use and enjoyment of the river and these public plans are adversely affected by jet boat operations. And the multi-use of the Upper Rogue River is threatened by the future proliferation of jet boats. There are many other areas downstream of the Rogue that allow jet boats and we seek to protect this narrow and shallow section of the river. To preserve water quality and high-value ecosystems, and doing that requires the limitation of jet boats. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, hello, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Uh, my name is Chuck Huntington. I'm a Shady Cove resident and a lifelong river person and boatman. I float the Upper Rogue many dozens of times each year. Uh, and I wanted to give some history because I'm not sure how many of the board members are new. I haven't looked it up. I'm sorry. I've been very busy this summer, but. I know the board changed its composition, uh, so I thought I'd go through a little history because I think it's informative. Back in twenty seventeen, the marine board rejected a petition to ban jet boat use on the Upper Rogue above the Table Rock Road Bridge. That petition was rejected because of your policy on multi, multi-use. Because citizen concerns had not been verified by agency studies and because alternative solutions had not been attempted. That was the rationale that showed up in the newspapers, on announcements from the Navy. Alternative solutions suggested by the, by the board were education, information, signage, voluntary restrictions, and increased law enforcement of existing laws. I do not recall any board member suggesting that when your multi-use policy was applied to many sections of the Upper Rogue, it had the effect of jet boat efficacy. But many of us who live here and know the river well had that thought. Now, seven years later, conflicts that were highlighted in public comments to the marine board in twenty seventeen have grown worse. And more clearly affect the public's safe use and enjoyment of what was once a consistently peaceful river environment. There has been little evidence of the solutions proposed by the board seven years ago. County enforcement of safety-related rules that ought to apply to jet boat use on the Upper Rogue River is virtually nonexistent. There has been, have been no studies conducted by our state agencies that use of jet boats on the Upper River. A study of Rogue River boating safety and conflicts, the marine board itself co-sponsored in the Middle Rogue. In the mid nineties noted that, quote, "A basic tenet of river recreation boating safety is that when no safe stopping, stopping point is within the field of view. It is unsafe to proceed in the sections of the river where unknown hazardous circumstances may exist. The boating operator will not see them until they're right before it." Such situations are unavoidable, unavoidable for jet boaters operating without spotters on many segments of the Upper Rogue. But this has, this has not stopped them from passing into and through these areas at high speed. Nor led to enforcement actions by marine deputies funded by the marine. The basic tenet of river recreation boating safety that I have quoted is codified in a combination of three of Oregon's boating safety rules. ORS eight thirty point three oh five, ORS eight thirty point three one five sub two, and ORS eight thirty point three three five. Your agency bears responsibility for seeing that these statutes get enforced along the Upper Rogue River. Some of us who live here have tried very hard to get them enforced and failed. Jackson County officials seem reserved. It is time for an independent, objective study of the safety risks of operating jet boats on the Upper Rogue. The marine board should not allow jet boat use of the Upper Rogue to continue expanding before the results of such a study are available to informed decision makers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming out today. So Dale and Cameron, you wanna come up? And then on deck is Lisa James and John Enders.
Hello, uh, my name is Dale Penn. Um, I live in Trail. Um, fifty years ago or so, I used to go up to Shady Cove and go to a tire store first and get an inner tube. And then we would float at Shady Cove. When I came back fifty years later, I noticed that the whole town flints, rafts, nothing. It's a big thing and there's lots of people come down the river. For the reasons that Senator Golden wrote in his letter, I absolutely support it and believe that it is an appropriate letter. With reasons. Unfortunately, today, we've heard a lot of things. I've heard, I've heard data. I've heard about studies. Um. But what I heard from the commercial operation was, I think. Or he said, I guarantee. Yeah, that's nice. That's his opinion. But we have seen today testimony, and you're gonna hear more testimony, of problems. Of people almost getting run over, all kinds of issues that have come up. The question about, well, when did this start? Well, it started with the commercial jet boat. That's when it got bad because the repeat traveling up and down the river. So why, uh, the commission talked about they don't wanna do a bar. Why not a bar? Um, you know, uh, we need a bar or we need a law because of what you saw today. In twenty twenty-two, Mr. Grimes told the State Parks Board that he would never go up, uh, at Shady Cove. And you heard Shady Cove talk about that today. And yet, today, in this seat, he would not say that. He said, no, I don't wanna have a, a ban up there, even though he'd been, been saying just a little over a year ago, I would- That's why there needs to be a regulation. You can't trust people. You gotta have a law. So, um. I've, I've seen some problems in the meetings about, well, we have zero complaints from law enforcement. Well, you're hearing now that there really isn't a process for that. And yet, there's been a lot of stuff going on. So, uh, and we hear that people don't go there now because of the jet boats. I heard concerns about enforcement. A bar or a fifteen horsepower link can be easily enforced. We've got the city of, city of Shady Cove, all kinds of homeowners. All you gotta do is take a picture. And, uh, have an affidavit. It's a piece of cake, just like traffic enforcement or red light cameras. Easily enforced. So we gotta be careful. This is the big issue for me. When kitchen table says, this is a special stretch of river. For generations, for people. We must protect it for the future. The health of our river is the most important thing. And then we looked at the, the highest uses, fishing, bird watching, rafting, drift boating. Then you have others, but those highest ones are all focused with fish. And birds and that whole ecological, ecological chain. So it's very important that we be careful of Crater Lakes River in our state. So repetitive root, use speed, all of those are the problem. I would request that the board consider, like, I can get, I'll take one, four minutes.
Real quick.
You've got lots of time. But, uh. You should, because up until last year, everyone agreed that no one should take jet boats up above, uh, the Shady Cove. Um, and now we're hearing the change. But I think since boats haven't been up there, you should establish Shady Cove, no boats. Two Bell to Shady Cove, no boats. But that's an area that has had jet boat operation. So you have pristine water, Shady Cove. You have, uh, the bridge to Shady Cove where the jet boat was operating or rattling. And then you have where the jet boat operates now. You can have a study, three different areas of the river. Work with SOU, the other, uh, state agencies, it would be easy. To at least gather data because you want data. Well, we need regulation and you've heard a lot of other data, but you couldn't find data to tell you. With those three portions for, apologize for taking too much-
Thank you.
Well, my name's Cameron Walser. Um, I'm a guide on the Rogue River. I also went to school here in the valley at SOU for outdoor adventure leadership with minors and tourism. Um, it is clear that the Rogue River is a multi-use river. We all know that. We've all heard it a thousand times today. I have nothing personally against jet boats. Besides on the Upper River. We've heard and we have countless bits of information telling us how detrimental it is to our fish. Why are we allowing this to continue to happen? And I have nothing against Rogue Jets where they're, where they're operating. But it is a dangerous area where we have a lot of salmon and steelhead populations spawning. We talk about multi-use and the restrictions of that and how that might infringe upon our rights. When we're in Nordic areas, we can't run snowmobiles, just like up in Mount Ashland. We have restrictions on certain loud engines for the peace of the other people operating within that space as well. I think that's a very important thing to point out. It's not that we're saying you cannot be here. You can still be here. You can still operate, just not with a jet boat. Just to reassure everybody here. I am in support of a fifteen horsepower van from the bridge, which is at Two Bell, all the way to the dam. Cause I do believe that it is important for our river's ecosystem and the people enjoying it as well. Uh, I do see that Rogue Jets are very nice people. They interact very well. And I do believe they stated. It would not affect their business negatively and they could still operate within that restricted area. And it's still leaving so much of our river that everybody else wants to rent jet boats from that bridge deck. That's all I gotta say.
Just absolutely right.
Thank you very much, both of you for coming out. Lisa and John?
I think you have someone else that is online. It's either John Pogue or Joel Shepherd.
Okay, it'll be number three. This is-
Lisa Meyer, uh, Lisa James.
Lisa James and John Enders.
And, excuse me, uh, John Pogue has been trying to get in and it just can't be heard.
Okay.
Even when his name was called the first time.
Um, so he's gonna, he'll speak after Mr. Enders. And he needs to do star six when we call his name.
Thank you. I told him. Thank you.
All right.
I'm Lisa James. Lived on the Rogue River for almost forty years. I'm one of those elite property owners that pays a lot in property taxes. This is not about us. This is about the fact that we witnessed what we witnessed every day and sounded alarms. There were over twenty-six hundred people that participated in the Oregon kitchen table process. There were over two thousand people that responded last year to- There were over 2,000 people that responded last year to Oregon State Parks' request for comments. There were over 2,000 people that signed our petition on change.org to ban jet boats on this stretch of the Rogue River. It is not, there are not that many of us that live on the base of the Rogue River. We just see it every day. So I'm here as a very informed citizen that owned a jet boat, 22 foot, for over 30 years, and I was part of the gentleman's agreement that Don Blazer mentioned earlier, where we put our jet boats in at Twoville and went south, went towards the ocean. We didn't come up because this is known as traditionally, the stretch of the river that was the non-motorized users' safe place. The last place for them to take it out was Twoville State Park. So you can put in above me at Dodge Bridge, or DeKalma, or Shady Cove, and I have wrapped it all. We are bookended by two sections of the Rogue River that are designated Wild and Seating Protected Stretches of the River, and now we're talking about this particular stretch. You have plenty of precedents across the state, many on the Deschutes River and elsewhere that name the specific stretches that are restricted from motorized boat uses. Right on the Oregon State Marine Board's website, just look up non-motorized boat restrictions, you can see plenty of precedent for what we're requesting. I know my time is short, so I want to mention a few highlights that I think haven't been mentioned. I was going to read the ORS charge, but somebody already did that today. August 26, the ODFW Fishing Report Regarding the Rogue, rain last week raised the river and dropped the water temperatures. A lot of shenik left the rogue day and headed upriver. This time of year, it's hard to catch shenik in the river due to the algae steered up by jet boats, and the fish are moving fast. I want to address something our county commissioner said about, the Rogue River's just like I-5. I live next to I-5, I don't like the noise on I-5. Well, Colleen Roberts, I had to ask her today, does she know that this stretch was surveyed and deemed non-navigable? It is not I-5, it is not the freeway. That's another point that I have a whole bunch on, but I'm going to skip it right now. But the, just in 2022, June of 2022, Carl Eschler from the United States Coast Guard MSU Office in Portland, talked about this being non-navigable in a letter to the Marine Board about this conflict. How about the Medford Water Commission? Anybody here actually live in Medford, get your water through the Medford Water Commission? Well, when the Oregon State Parks asked for public comment, and got over 2,000 comments submitted to them, Brad Taylor, the general manager of the Oregon, or the Medford Water Commission, which provides water beyond Medford as well, wrote a letter to Oregon State Parks about their concerns. And I'm only going to read a couple of quotes and excerpts, but it is public information that we require. Am I really at three minutes?
You're about three and a half.
Okay. I will submit my written testimony, but there is a letter about their concerns about the vegetation that is stirred up at their intake, the fouling of the water that is trying to be purified for Medford water, the fuels and other contaminants dislodged from jetboats. And lastly, I want to read this quote from 2015, when Rogue Jet Boat Adventures had one 10-seater boat, quote, in the Mail Tribune, "Because of the nature of the Upper Road, Grimes said he could never operate a boat rated for more than 16 people. The current boat has a maximum of 10 passengers." It's not like we're taking a 747 out there like Hellgate, he says. Well, then they assumed about an 18-seater, and now a 25-seater, and they all three come up together, if you want to bring 50 people. So yeah, it is like a 747, and it's too big, it's too frequent, 14,000 people came up, and then they think it's the Hollywood tour homes, and they tell all these strangers, who owns what house and who lives there part-time? And I asked them personally to stop it.
That's defamation. Doesn't happen.
I have many people who took the tour boat, that won't tell you that they did.
Thank you. Mr. Enders?
Hi, my name is John Enders from Talent. I've used the Rogue for more than 70 years. Love the river. In honor of the late, great Chris Doberson, I just want to remind everybody that freedom's just another word for nothing left to lose. And we all define freedom in different ways, but I believe people don't have the right to do whatever they want. That's not freedom, it's irresponsibility. Part of the living in a civilized society is accepting the fact that we give up being able to do some things for the common good. We can't drive 100 miles an hour on the freeway, we can't shoot off guns inside the city limits, and the idea that the river belongs to us all and we can use it any way we want is hogwash. I'm also a firm believer in the ethic, leave no trace, especially when you're out in nature, whether it's the Calmeopses or the Skylakes Wilderness, on the heavily traveled Oregon coast, or on the Rogue River. Leave no trace. Don't damage or destroy the pristine areas where we live. The scientific data are clear, high-powered jet boats are machines that damage the river and harm the species living in it. If it were up to me, I would outlaw the use of all jet boats on the Rogue from the coast to the dam. But I'm willing to accept a compromise proposed by the Upper Road Guardians, keep jet boats on the Lower Rogue and only allow engines up to 15 horsepower on the Upper Rogue above Twoville. That will at least protect a part of the river, a part that is highly vulnerable and is a very reasonable request of this form. There's also the very serious issue of safety. I'm also a firm believer in don't hurt or kill people while having fun. Recent events on the river clearly indicate the very real dangers of allowing powerful high-speed jet boats to mix with drift boats, swimmers, shoreside anglers, rafters, et cetera, is just plain dangerous. If you don't institute a limit on their use on the Upper Rogue, it is virtually certain that there will be people hurt and/or killed in future collisions. Imagine, imagine that. Imagine the headlines, imagine the investigations, and imagine the lawsuits that will come down if such things happen. This is your opportunity to act to protect people and the Rogue River. I urge you to move to adopt rules limiting the use of jet boats on the Upper Road. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out today. We're gonna go back to our online folks, and John Pope, I understand you're out there. Dial star six, and then you can speak.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there's quite a.
Sorry.
Okay. My name's John Pope, I am the current president of the Rogue Fly Fishers. I am speaking today on behalf of the club. I recently decided to go down to Twoville Park on Labor Day weekend. First off, I'd like to say there were no other fishermen, and not one salmon spawning on the flat below the boat ramp. When I moved here in 2017, there were always salmon on that flat this time of year. The last couple of years, it's gotten less and less. So that's one thing that I believe is the cause of the jet boat. And then the other thing, you know, Labor Day weekend, not one fisherman besides myself. So the water quality was great in the morning, but by late afternoon, it was full of vegetation caused by the jet boat running up and down the river. Fishing is just a waste of time once this happens. Not only did the Rogue Jet Boats, Rogue Jet Boat Adventure boats make a mess of the river, but the vegetation, Mr. Grimes himself, shows no respect for the waiting angler. On both the first and the second, Mr. Grimes never slowed down once while passing me, and wouldn't even look up to acknowledge me. However, his other captain slowed down and idled by me every time he went downstream. I understand they can't slow down going upstream, it's a safety hazard. However, going downstream, they can, and his other captain demonstrated. As the friendly captain went by in the largest boat, I waved and said thank you, no sooner than I said thank you. Mr. Grimes came speeding downstream, never slowing down, and even sped up to go by myself and the other captain. Grimes continuously says he is courteous to the other river users. He shows no respect to anglers, and I have proof, since I not only filmed his behavior on this day, but also filed a complaint with Deputy Prins at the Jackson County Sheriff's Office. In the complaint that Mr. Grimes filed against ODFW, he mentions that he has contributed to restoration projects on the river. Well, the Rogue Fly Fishers have been doing restoration projects on this river since 1971, along with the Middle Rogue Steel headers and the Southern Oregon Fly Fishers, including the ODOT gravel pit area that was mentioned earlier today. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate the time to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any of our other online people? Okay. So next up, Pete Peterson and Michael Gorman. And then after that, it would be Charles, excuse me, Charles Redner and Michael Lynch.
Hope this doesn't take away from my time. Okay, maybe I'll have me think. I'd just like to introduce myself. Pete Peterson, I was born and raised in a trail, been there my whole life. I believe we have three different topics that we talk about today. One is the River Recreation Users, and the other is a jet boat user. Third person that's not here today is the river. It can't speak for itself. I originated in a trail, and used to see 80,000 spawning salmon, 20,000 spawning steelhead. The river now is a decline. My challenge today is make decisions today that can help that decline. We have a voice, we need to use it. We've heard a lot of topic today. The Rogue Guardian gave an expert speech on facts and findings, and they were, they're a group that I believe gave great testimony of truth, only to be called liars. And the person to be called liars, I would only hope that they could educate themselves as well as that group to be telling the truth. We're asked here today as a committee to understand and pick and choose tough decisions. But in our declining cycle, I ask in a declining cycle of the river, that we make a change to help it. If we don't put an element of change back into the river, that decline continues. You have a choice today, it's not the only purpose of declining in a rivering cycle, but you have a choice to help that decline. The river up in Shady Cove, where I drift most of my fishing, I've been a river guide since 1981. If you did 100 days this year on average, in 10 years, that would be 1,000, in 20 years, that would be 2,000. Don't do 42 years. So we see it firsthand. In seeing it firsthand, my challenge to this group is, if you spend 40 days as a group on the river, spend more. If you get a chance, you're making decisions that are so valuable to our economy and to the person that's not here, the river. We talked about, and our mayor stood in great resources to help the health of the river. There's lots of activity, we understand, in the Lost Creek to Shady Cove. We as a guide group move our operations below Shady Cove because of the rafting. It's just sharing in river use. I've only heard our jet boat operator call most people liar, fishing game a liar, the groups that are speaking lies. How does his group and operation be on the river and coexist with everyone when everybody's a liar? And as we move our guide group below Shady Cove because of the amount of rafting, it's not the primary place I'd like to fish, but I move it, so we're asking to move his operation down river. I know that the commission here has strong beliefs between using liquor and being on a boat. I hate to say, but their operation's all about a booze cruise. If we want to invite that type of environment on our river, we change the profile of what our river and our valley is about. We profiled, and the county challenged today was, they did nothing about the marijuana grows, so now we profiled our valley as a marijuana grow. Let's profile our river as pristine and as famous as it is. When we profile it as a booze cruise, you're bringing in an element that I dislike and all the recreational users. I'm proud to be a pond fisher. The river up above gets lots of use, so we moved operation down into the lower parts of the river below Shady Cove. So this area down below is just, oh, we're gonna see more use, it needs more regulation. That Twoville and above and Rattlesnake, that's all getting more and more use because the use is up above. Challenging boats to give them a reward and better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman?
My name's Michael Gorman. I live in Shady Cove for four months of the year, split time with Corvallis the other eight months of the year. I've done this for the last 30 years. Rogue is a special river, so I'm willing to live 200 miles from my home. For 33 years, I taught five different fishing classes, credit classes at Oregon State University at thousands of students at Oregon State. I did my best to instill reverence and respect for rivers, their living inhabitants and environment. My students experienced this, they waded rivers and fish on our scheduled field trips. This is not propaganda, this is not misinformation. I'm not a liar. Native salmon and steelhead spawn in shallow water in a nursery of small rocks and gravel. On the fishing run that I frequent most often, Rattlesnake Rapids, down to Twoville Park, for more than 30 years, and very conservative with more than 1,000 trips in that period, I've watched salmon spawning in three distinctly lengthy expanses of river, ranging from 50 yards plus to more than 100 yards. Two of these expanses are located at Constance Creek, a couple miles below Rattlesnake Rapids, and the other expanses along the north bank of Upper Twoville Park. On Oregon State Marine Board's website, on its wakes page, if you've looked at that, it says, quote, "Be aware of your wake and water depth. Shower water yields larger wakes. Boat in deeper waters. Avoid getting close to other boats and the shore." Might mention, this is not propaganda, this is not misinformation, and I'm not lying. Because of the Upper Rogue's rocky geography, jet boats, like the tour boats, must run directly over these two shallow spawning zones that I just mentioned at times. At times, they're within 40 feet of the shore at point-blank range. Historically, the Rogue Adventure boats finish their tours Labor Day before most of before most of the spring should have staged for spawning. But the nurseries and the serious damage that's done there to the parents that will be the fish happens. And what do the river's fish, aquatic insects, crustaceans, and plants experiences? As I said, in shallow water, under or near the violent bath of the ski boats, they experience destruction. What about the huge numbers of salmon and steelhead who are panicked and scattered in other waters, in the deeper waters? With the potential for up and down river travel 12 times a day at the peak season, what happens to these fish as they panic and burn their energy? With my guide to clients, we play a game called Count the Salmon. It's a fun game. Travel through shallow areas where the salmon are known to spawn and watch more than 30. Oh, count. Okay? So last week, on September 27th, along the north bank of Upper Twoville Park, my clients and I counted exactly 2 cent. Where over the years in the past, I've seen many, many more. I expected to see 10 times that number. And they're currently subpar numbers at Constance Creek. Also, why? What's changed in the last decade? Think I missed a jet boat. All right. So, in sum, what I'll say is, how is a single business enterprise allowed to adversely affect a once great river, its fish, its ecology, and so many who would enjoy the Upper Rogue River? I plead, please, Commissioner, I plead that common sense and the obvious principle. Please limit the jet boats below Twoville Bridge and 15 horsepower limit. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming out. Charles Wagner and Michael Lynch. And on deck is Rania Hadad and Steve Mitchell.
Online people are done. We're still streaming. I said our online people are done, but we're still streaming.
Okay.
I'm just turning that off.
I'm Charles E. Wagner, Captain, United States Navy, retired. I've been the officer of the deck and the conning officer on a 355-foot nuclear submarine in and out of Pearl Harbor, Upper Harbor, Guam, Chinook, Korea, Mombasa, Kenya, and too many other ports to name. I've also been the officer of the deck and the conning officer on a 644-foot submarine tender in and around Seattle, Bremerton, Fugit Sound, the Straits of Wanda Fuka, Acapulco, and eastern ports, including Guantanamo and Newport News, and a transit of the Panama Canal. I also have run rivers on the oars in Montana, on the Blackfoot, the Smith, Idaho, the middle fork of the Salmon River, Oregon, the Sandy, the Clackamas, and too many others to name. I also own and operate a 21-foot jet boat, not on the Rogue River. I've made over 100 trips down the upper section of the Rogue in a drift boat, generally as a passenger, occasionally on the oars. And the Upper Rogue River, as you've heard, is a narrow linear waterway with many narrow shoots, blind corners. I don't know if I am able to get this on your picture, but I'd like to show you a picture of one of those narrow shoots. It's about 25 feet wide. If a small craft, unpowered, whether it's a drift boat with oars or raft with oars, or a kid on an inner tube meets a jet boat in that narrow channel, they have no place to go. They are at the mercy of the current. I hope you'll read my written testimony with respect to the nautical rules of the Rogue and the Rogue River. In almost every case on the Rogue River, a powered jet boat will have the obligation to cede the right of way to an unpowered craft, whether they are going up or down the river, whether they are anchored or stationary in a nonpowered boat. The jet boat or the powered boat is moving and has the most maneuverability of any of those vessels. And so it has the obligation and the duty to avoid those other vessels. That may not be very easy around a blind corner in a chute that is 25 feet wide. A kayak coming down, one of the more maneuverable craft, once it's committed to that line of travel, has virtually no option to move out of the way. Inner tubes, no mobility to move out of the way. Drift boats, a limited ability to move out of the way. In a drift boat, if your oars are out and you're stabilizing in a chute, you're taking up a good part of that 25-foot chute with your oars and your boat. So I urge you to consider not just the safety of all of these vessels, but the difficult position you put not just the floating craft, but the jet boat operator in by having them in narrow waterways with narrow navigability and the necessity to run so they can steer. And I don't know if I can get this on your camera or not. No?
If you can send it to Jennifer, she can make sure that we look at it.
Well, I suggest you see it for yourself.
Thank you very much.
My name's Mike Lynch. I live in Medford. I've been resident of Jackson County since 2002, and I think I am the piker in this group because I don't spend as much time or have as much experience or will speak as eloquently as some of our prior presenters. There are a couple of things I would like to point out. From my listening to testimony this morning, I heard a lot of commentary about a propaganda campaign and the things that the city of Shady Cove was doing that was creating propaganda. I think that was a purposeful misdirection of our attention away from away from other things that are happening on this river. In my opinion, it's not only about Shady Cove because the commercial boats only go up to Rattlesnake. So I know that there can be jet boats above that, but the problems that are occurring right now are basically because of the heavy commercial jet boat use. Like I said, I'm kind of a piker. I've been on the river probably 20 times this year between June and September. Some wading, fishing, boating. And there was a comment made earlier about prop motors and how much they tear up the bottom of the river. In my years on the river, and I'm not as familiar as some of these other individuals, I've never seen a prop motor on the river over 10 horsepower. And that's consistently from Twoville up to Dodge Bridge. Now, a little bit about my interactions on the river. I consistently experienced problems with the commercial jet boat operators. In my handout, which I provided, I addressed two of these instances just this year. Mr. Grimes earlier referred to the professional conduct of his boat operators, boat drivers. My experience is usually the opposite. I think that they show little regard for the river, for other boaters, and for safety on the river. I've experienced situations myself where I've been almost knocked over by a wake. If you've ever been wading and the wake comes at you, it creates an amount of buoyancy that you can often be lifted off of your feet while you're trying to maintain your balance. I also had a situation where my wife was almost thrown out of the fishing boat because of the wake, the size of the wake, in an area where the jet boat didn't really have to go that quickly through that area because there was ample room for passage of two boats there. Anyway, in conclusion, I support 15-hour, or 15-hour, 15-horsepower limitation from above Twoville. And I want to thank you for your time and your attention, your interest. And if you have any questions, I'd like to try to answer them for you.
Good, thank you for coming out today. So next up, we have Rania and Steve Mitchell.
Hello. Thank you. Please let me know if I'm not speaking loud enough. I'd like to point out three small things about some of the, where obviously the audience couldn't respond to some of the comments that were made. And then please let me know if I go over three minutes.
You'll hear a long beep, and then I'll do this in about a half minute after that.
So we're asking for 15 horsepower because most of the drift boats that the fishing operations run here is only nine and a half, on average, nine and a half horsepower. So that's plenty of things to keep the traditional river users going and in business. And also, no one has mentioned it yet. I'm glad that Rogue Jet Boat Adventures has had 14,000 customers in 2023. It's been quoted three times in the Rogue Valley Times. But the fishing guides, I'm speaking for them, sorry, I can't help it. The fishing guides have suffered economically and emotionally. I have several people that I've gotten to know as fishing guides, and they've suffered, they've suffered tremendously. And some of them have had to quit the fishing guide business because they can't make ends meet with their families. Another thing that was stated earlier about the boat is a little bit larger than the largest boat that is running on the Rogue River. Well, actually, what was not mentioned is that the horsepower on that largest 25-foot passenger boat is 800 horsepower. And with my limited knowledge, it's about medium-sized SUV is about 500. So me, as living on the Rogue River for close to 30 years, listen to Big Harley Davidson-like things, 14,000, well, I calculated it, it's about 1,400 times in four months. So, yeah. And then the last thing with my little points or comments, and if there's time, I'll get to my thing. The Hellgate study was then, that keeps on being quoted, was then in 1975, that was published in 1975. And a lot of technology has changed since then. So the scientific, and they were using their best stuff. The scientific stuff has tremendously changed over the years. And that data is flawed. And Dr. Michael Parker in our packet, he proves in there that it's not accurate. And then this is not a propaganda or disinformation. On the Oregon State Marine Board website, addressing the weights, be aware of weight and water depth. Shallow water yields large weights. Also, on the OSMB website, it's a crime to operate a boat carelessly in willful disregard for others. And we see that happening, especially with the stunts with the 360s and the brakes. Thank you. And the Kenai study, a Kenai River study in Alaska in 97, it's for, that river is four times, has about, on the average, four times the water CFSs as compared to the Upper Rogue. And there were a lot of problems in terms of erosion and other various things. And because of the various study, the study that they did on the Kenai, they limited it to 50, 5-0 horsepower on the Kenai. So we're asking for 15 horsepower, and that is about four times less. The CFSs and the horsepower, they're equivalent to four times. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for all the support. I didn't realize there were that many people concerned about our beloved Rogue River. I'm sorry if I went over. And thank you, guys, for coming down here and caring.
You're doing. Hello. My name is Steve Mitchell, as you don't know me. And I live in Shady Cove, and I have since 2001 on the Rogue River. And I'm one of 200 property owners who own property on the Rogue River in Shady Cove. My neighbors and I, along with a local fishing rafting business, that's Jack from the Fishing Hall, as well as two of his fishing guides, informed they do not support jet boat operations on the Upper Rogue as approved by the Oregon State Marine Board. They felt that a 15-horsepower motor should be the maximum allowed on the Upper Rogue River. During a review and approval process, the property owners in Shady Cove who live in the Rogue River and the city of Shady Cove, the city council, were not informed of a pending commercial jet boat business you were considering. Although I'm told that you did contact the Jackson County Commissioners on a jet boat business, they too, they too did not have the courtesy to inform the city of Shady Cove Council that they would have a huge impact on our economy, affecting our rafting and fishing guide businesses, as well as our lodging and restaurants. I'm asking that the Oregon State Marine Board rescind their approval process on this commercial business used since they didn't properly notify the citizens of Shady Cove or the city council. I also request that you reduce the horsepower on engines on boats to no more than 15 horsepower on the Upper Rogue River until a formal notification process of these types of businesses affecting property owners who live in the river and our local business, Shady Cove. And I've been in government for over 30 years, go through the planning process, any kind of business. Generally have to go in application, you have a public hearing, want to know how it's going to impact the neighbors. And Shady Cove, those 200 properties are all covering the entire length of Shady Cove from the southern city limits to the northern city limits. So it's not really a city highway unless you want to look at the neighbors' backyards in that sense. And it's just, you know, and I've been there since that time. I have a more house, original 28. It's nine feet from the top of the bank. And I'm on my computer, I can see the rafters, kayakers, drift boats going by all the time. And sometimes in succession during the summertime. But one thing that got a lot of this to concern me was, real quick, was this the Oregon Administrative Rule, which is OAR 141-081-0050, which is regarding the navigable rivers of Oregon. And it says in part, "The Oregon River Draft Naval Little Study, report conducted by the Oregon Department of State Lands, DSL, is a crucial government document that examines the navigability of the Upper Rogue River. This report directly impacts discussions summarizing jet boats and their safety on the river. The study focuses on an 89-mile river segment from Graves Creek to Lost Creek Dam. It considers historical and modern river usage by various watercraft, including jet boats. I don't know how old this is. I know that jet boats are not conducive to our Upper Rogue River, and I wish you would consider maximum horsepower of any jet boat or watercraft, no more than 15 horsepower." Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah. Can, with regards to your question about the Marine Board having approved something, we've heard this a bunch of times, and I've been on the board since 2019, and I think what's being discussed came before my time, and it may even be before Rania's time. What are we talking about? Because we're not aware of any special approvals or approvals. Because we're not aware of any special approvals or permits or anything.
Sure, Jackson, I think it'd be best for me to take a shot at that question instead of go do our public testimony. So I think there was some information floated around that at one point in time, Marine Board was licensing jet, commercial jet boat operations to go above Rattlesnake Rapids specifically in conjunction with some work that was being done at the boat ramp up above that. And we've been able, you know, I thought we'd, there's been outreach on that to really help fill in the gap that we don't license commercial operations that way at all. We, we license guides and outfitters in the state of Oregon. They meet different requirements, bonding, commercial coast guard licensing, if that's applicable and different things like that. But we don't license a commercial jet boat operation to go to a specific spot. And in relation to that particular boat ramp, again, not the best part today to go through that. But I'd be happy in the twenty-third to share just so the public can see it as well as hazard. That boat ramp was designed actually to serve rafters and drift boaters and wasn't designed to serve the commercial jet boat operators in any way, shape or form. So I can assure you that we don't license specifically that way for boats to go.
I appreciate Director Warren clarifying that because I think that's come up a couple of times today. And it's important to set the record straight.
May I respond? And the two Oregon tables I attended, one is Shady Cove at the high school gym, over a hundred people there. And again, the Tubel Park, I like to talk with agencies that came from government. And, and after talking with some of the Marine Board employees, and I think one of them was an ex-employee about the process it went through because he was the one that told me that it was, you know, being considered, that it actually went to the county commissioners. I guess maybe FYI for their, I guess their approval, is what I was told. But that one individual in Marine Board actually gave the approval. I'm just going by staff telling me this, you know, that one person approved that jet boat operation out of Tubel Park to go up to Rogue River, all the way up to the hatchery. So that just, I don't go by secondary when I talk with people under these agencies. I expect them telling me accurate information. I like to do the same thing too. I don't like it, you know, like hearsay. So.
Yeah, just to be clear, I was not assuming that you weren't using information. You thought, yeah, just, I think that's why the board wanted me to clarify.
Okay. I just want to let you know where I'm at. That's truthful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up we have Anne Goff and Tim Gilman. And then after that, we have, I'm not sure if it's Jerry or Jenny Plotnick and Scott Langfeld.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Anne Goff and I'm a thirty-five year resident of the beautiful Applegate Valley. That's my main river in which I recreate, especially the jewel of the county, Cantrell Buckland Park, which is amazing. Go there if you haven't. But I'm often enticed to leave my lovely valley to pursue my passion, which is birding. To that end, I frequently visit Tubel Park and the adjacent Denman Wildlife Management Area, which really hasn't been mentioned at all today, and it's adjacent and just upstream of the park. And the jet boats go right through that area. The purpose of that twelve hundred acres is to protect the wildlife. In that area where I go birding, I enjoy the special places there, the Denman area and Tubel Park for the birds, the wildlife, the tranquility, the beautiful river there. My experience as a user there has never been impacted by fly fishermen, drift boaters, swimmers, rafters, kayakers, hikers, picnickers, other birders. I've never had any impact from any of those users. But it is impacted by one particular type of user and as you would anticipate that I'm going to say it's the jet boat users. And it's really, for me, it's the noise of the jet boats that really disrupts my personal experience there. And it also interferes with the birds and the wildlife. And you've received a lot of information from the scientists about what those impacts are. And I don't speak to any of that. I'm not a scientist. I'm simply a birder who enjoys the user experience of the parks. And I just kind of wanted to say one other thing, this is a little bit off, a little side note that I kind of noticed something earlier today. A couple of people said that those of us who are in, I'm sorry, those people who are in opposition to restrictions for jet boats have said that those of us that are looking for restrictions on jet boats shouldn't be talking about, well, shouldn't be worrying so much about what might happen if there are no restrictions on jet boats. People have said, what, there's not a problem, don't address it. It's not a problem, don't address it. Okay, then I would just like to say that perhaps we shouldn't use that emotional argument that says, if we allow jet boat restrictions, what comes next? Restrictions on kayakers, restrictions on fly fishermen? I think that's just a little bit silly to say that we can't look to the future and worry about what's going to happen with jet boat uses, which is much more likely to create an impact on the river than a restriction put on kayakers or fly fishermen. Just kind of a little piece of something that I wanted to share. So in summary, I would just like to say that I support what other people have said here and Jeff Golden's letter, which I think really says it all. Please consider the fifteen horsepower ban or restriction on jet boats on the Rogue River. And please help consider the impacts on the Denman Wildlife Management Area, which is to be protected and cared for. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You're up.
All right, me. My name is Tim Gilman. I live at the south end of Shady Cove and have been using the Rogue River pre-Lost Creek Lake since nineteen seventy-three, multi-use fashion. And I think there's been a proliferation of discussion about the jet boat business coming up to Rattlesnake Rapids. And I wanted to focus my comments on Rattlesnake Rapids and above. Very narrow areas, certainly the widest portions of the river are quite a bit narrower than the Tubel area or south of there. We've heard other people talk about the blind corners and there's a lot of difficulty to maneuver. One gentleman is talking about a slot was twenty-five foot wide. Well, there's, there's some like dog leg, which is, you're rafting, you know that term, maybe ten feet wide. So people cannot go, you can only go one direction. And clearly, the jet boat is going to not allow that passage. And so I wanted to mention that in the last couple of years, there's been a proliferation of all sorts of different sized jet boats. And there's also been a proliferation of people paddle boarding and people in single person pontoon vessels, they call them skeeters, I guess. If you're sitting about this far above the water, your legs are in the water. There's no way a jet boat is going to see that person. And in terms of paddleboard, I mentioned that because of all the crap that we've talked about, that I think they would be the most vulnerable. And we see about one a day during the, you know, during the high season. So I would consider this. And also, if any of you have not been able to float that part of the river, we'd be glad to host you, you know, it's a one, maybe a whole river, it might be a two day float. Get a hold of this, you know, we'll take you down there so you can see it for yourself. So I looked at the OSMB mission statement, which in part says, "Environmental stewardship for a safe, enjoyable experience." Then I thought about what restrictions are out there currently. And I looked at OAR two fifty dash twenty-one dash thirty. And there's a proliferation of rivers that there's restrictions on, including a portion of the road from Gold Strait to Applegate River. Those are wide sections of the river. Some of the restrictions are slow to no wake, within two hundred foot of a swimmer or waiter, a hundred, hundred feet of an anchored non-motorized vessel, two hundred feet from the shoreline, although it specifies lakes and bays. Don't disturb the water life. That area also happens to be where there was a horrendous jet boat accident recently. A lot of people were injured. We've seen ODMW slides from twenty-two discouraging use in low conditions of anything under one foot of water. So in conclusion, for the last year or so, I've been following and participating. And on one side of the argument, I see people presenting science, engineering, personal documented experiences. And on the other side, I see the demonization of people who live on the river, affluent people who should be ignored. But we have twenty-six hundred people that have signed petitions and participated in this process. I see the demonization of a city of Shady Cove trying to protect their interests with, you know, being called propaganda. I see political interest. And I see people wanting us to believe that jet boats are maneuverable at low speeds. So science, engineering? That's my conclusion.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so next, next up, I believe it's Jenny and Scott Langfeld. And then the last would be Sandy, Steve and Will Johnson.
My name is Jenny Plotnick and I live above Sam's Valley. I'm a resident there and my husband really wanted to be here today. He's very familiar with the river, but he's in a small horseshoe dealing with purple glue and white PVC pipes. I want to thank you for your time. And I understand City of Sandy Board is arduous, it really is. There's so much information to take in and you have to be so respectful of so many different viewpoints. So I appreciate that. It must be overwhelming. I, I view your position as the primary goal that you have is safety. Say, if you were going to say one, one purpose for your board is ensuring safety. And at the top of that list, we realize the safety of human beings. They give people, and we've heard a lot of testimony that that seems a little bit in jeopardy in the situation. And there's also the safety of wildlife that comes under that purview and safety of the earth, whether it's the land, whether it's gravel, whether it's the river, the topography. So I appreciate that you're there taking care of us and taking care of this beautiful place we live in. The Rogue River is known worldwide. It's a little bit eye opening to travel to a different country. And you have somebody say, oh, my gosh, isn't that where the Rogue River is? Say, have you ever been on the Rogue River? I mean, it is world famous, people go Prager Lake and the headwaters and people know about the Rogue River. This is the gem of the valley. That's the reason that a lot of us live here, obviously. It sounds like you've been, you know, I can't imagine seeing these big notebooks here. And I'm sure that's just the start of it, all the online information and research you have to do with all the input must be absolutely overwhelming. I appreciate again your time and consideration. It seems like this has been going on for quite a while and that there has been information and research and studies been going on for years and years. And I'm just wondering what's taking so long. I feel a little bit of frustration here for that. You have to mix science, again, those, all those facts and figures and the wonderful scientific research and information people have given and humanity is what's in your heart. You can't, those two things are inseparable in this situation. This is a unique section of the river. It's the upper third, it's the baby of the Rogue River. And we have to treat that differently because it's a, it's a different size. It's a different makeup than the other two thirds of the river. This takes very, very special consideration and really a lot of careful, loving care. We have to be tender because things that we do up here will, will not be changeable in years to come. It might already be too late. I don't know. I don't think so, but because I like to be, look on the bright side of things. So hopefully there's time. And I just would employ you. You know, my question to you is, will you do something? You'd have to make two simple decisions, two simple rule changes to summarize this whole thing that I believe most of the people in this room believe would make a huge impact on something that we really care deeply about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Langfeld, born and raised here. I'm not a transplant. Through the years, I've seen people move in, figuring what laws work and where they're from here that may or may not work in our situation here. In eighteen fifty-nine, when the federal government said now, or when Oregon was admitted into the Union in eighteen fifty-nine, the federal government said navigable waters shall, shall be common highways and forever free. In two thousand and eight, it was declared navigable from Graves Creek to Lost Creek Dam. I grew up in Shady Cove as well, there in the eighties. Like one gentleman said, rubber inner tubes. I mean, I remember that. I remember jet boats going by in the eighties. What has changed from then to now? Why wasn't this in effect then? Just like Goldman said, in rafting lower Rogue, I wrapped it as well too. I mean, we all have to learn how to coexist. I don't feel, I mean, I've always lived my life where I've always thought maybe the Upper Rogue is a drift boat raptor use. But where's your line? I mean, that's what needs to be cut and dry, but there shouldn't be a line. You give an inch, you never get it back. And I am totally don't, don't agree with what's, what's being said here today.
Great, thank you. So our next two folks are Sandy Tipton and Steve Wise.
Hi. I'm Steve Wise, I'm Executive Director of the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy. We are the first and oldest nonprofit land conservancy in the state of Oregon. We've been operating in this region since nineteen seventy-eight. Currently protect eighty-two different areas from the eastern border of the state out to the coast. And our flagship preserve is a three hundred fifty acre, two mile stretch of the road called the Rogue River Preserve. That's just upstream of Dodge Bridge Park. And it's an extraordinary area that we found out through doing research across the Rogue Basin. There's three million acres in the Rogue Basin. This is pretty much the only place we were able to find that has comparable intact floodplain forests. So when you're talking about the river, we like to talk about the riparian zone. And beyond the riparian zone, the entire stretch of habitats that surround the river. In our case, that includes the immediate floodplain forest. It includes a tributary stream that supports coho salmon. It includes the island in the river that supports a population, a breeding population of elk, such that we've named that island Elk Island. And the small channel between it is a place where these migratory elk like to swim back and forth from land to the island for safety at night. We've got trail cameras showing this, very active zone for the elk. We have eagle and osprey and a variety of bird life across the Rogue Reserve. Thirty-eight different species that are rare, threatened or endangered that use this small patch and have to have a large protective area in the grand scheme of things. But the only one of its type that is in this area that you're talking about. For all of these reasons, we think that it's incompatible with heavy motorized use. We also bring out, we have a student program, an education program that's now serving about two thousand kids per year coming out to this preserve, excuse me, to this preserve for the experience of intact functioning nature. We get reactions from these young students saying things like, I've never sat quietly like this in my whole life. I've never been able to hear my heartbeat before. Because they get to be in this place that is a natural zone, that is undisturbed, that has mainly its island-like, its fish, its aquatic-like. There are otters that are commonly found along the banks of the river there because it's a quiet space and it's safe for them. Coho salmon that are using the creek on our land are only in that creek during high water times. But the juvenile salmon, because of the life cycle, are in the river. the river throughout the year. So it's not safe for them to be disturbed throughout the entire year. We have annual monitoring trips where our staff and volunteers and students from Southern Oregon University come out on the river and are rafting from Shady Cove down to get to the Elk Island and check out the habitat and help improve it. All of these things, we say, the shortest version of our mission is that we're for people, we're for nature, and we're here forever. We're seeking permanent protection for the entire best parts of the Rogue Basin that are left. And this is an opportunity to add to those goals by restricting the size of motors to 15 horsepower, restricting the use above the Table Rock Road. Encourage you to take those actions for people, for nature.
Thank you. Is Sandy Tipton here?
Yeah. Here it is. Steve. Oh, I was, wait, Steve, no, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm on board. I'm, I'm in.
Okay. And then is Will Johnson here?
Hi, I'm Will Johnson. I own the Ashland Fly Fishing Shop at Ashland, Oregon. I've owned it for about 17 years. We book five different guides, so not too many. They run about 40 trips a year, probably something like that on the Upper River. So not a big operation, but I'm one of a handful of operations of different guys, trip boat guides. We fly fish. We appreciate the different regulations on the road. Myself, my staff, all the guides that we work with are heavily in support of the restrictions on motors. 15 horsepower or less would be great, down as far as possible, honestly. Where I think they should really go down to is where we really lose the cold water refugia in the Upper Rogue, which I haven't really heard talked about much today. But it's a pretty unique situation. I'm totally blown away that this guy can come into this area, drop his business in here, among all these other businesses that are here, user businesses, these user recreational groups, and create this kind of fuss in this area, and this is still going on? How? How is this possible? Are we not other businesses? Like, I don't really know what happened this morning. I wish I could have been here. But how can a private business be the only person that's involved in that discussion this morning? No one called me, or like, I, I don't understand. Like, I represent a lot of users on this river. So I'm, I'm really surprised. I, this is just kind of a shock to me that this is even a conversation still. So I really encourage you, you know, to look closely at this and try to find a way forward, because this is so not going away. It is just not going to go away. Even if you decide, like, oh, we're going to make it work. It's going to work out. It's good for the community. It's a great American business story, blah, blah, blah. It fits in. It's legal. It's legal. So what can we do? Like, okay, great, but it, it will not go away. There, there's just no way. I mean, because there's just more and more people coming to this area all the time, you know? And the Rogue is the Rogue. I mean, everything's the Rogue. We're sitting in the Rogue Community College, for God's sake. Rogue Bank, Rogue National this, Rogue that. Fish painted on our overpasses. And everywhere we go, we see fish. We, we, we love this area. We're here for the Rogue. And for somebody to just drop in, in the middle, and push all the other users off this section of the river is insane. How can that be possible? How can that be, how can that happen? And justify it? Like, I didn't hear the stuff that went on this morning, but like, demonization of other user groups? Are you out of your mind? What are you doing, dude?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah, what are you doing? How, how can you, how, how can you possibly think of the change?
Mr. Johnson, your time is up.
Yeah. Well, obviously, you've, you've really made an impression on a lot of people. Cold water refugia in the Upper Rogue created by Lost Creek Dam. We have some of the most unique habitat in a drought-ridden state that is just increasingly becoming more of an issue. We have such a unique thing here that we have cold water refugia for anadromous salmon and steelhead, wild populations of fish, highly threatened fish that can exist in this water temperature. If it had anything to do with the fish, you would create it where that cold water refugia starts to dissipate, which is in the area of like Gold Hill or somewhere in there. I really think that that's as far down as, that's where the restrictions should begin, is there. Because then that evens the playing field. But the biggest, biggest thing is the user groups. And he dominates them, dominates all user groups. Ridiculous.
Thank you. So we've gone through, we've gone through a list of folks who have signed up to testify. I checked, we do not have any other list. Is there anybody else in the room that did sign up or does want to testify? John, and then back there.
Yes, I signed up.
What was your name?
John Holt.
Uh, I'm not seeing a name. I'm not seeing that name here.
I'm the one who signed up. I'm sure you're on the phone.
So my name is John Scholl. Born and raised here, fifth generation Oregonian. My family homesteaded here in 1865. I grew up, my grandfather fishing the Upper River. And by fishing the Upper River, I mean above the dam. He fought, he went to the Supreme Court to fight, stop that dam. Where she lost, obviously. I've fished that lower section my entire life. And the biggest change has been jet boats. You're fishing in pristine water, and a roaring boat comes by you and sweeps you off your feet, where you're wading through to a new spot, and a jet boat comes by you, and you have to retreat. It is not right. It is not fair. It affects the salmon population heavily. It affects stream erosion heavily. I've been to Lisa's house. I've seen that she has a sprinkler six feet out with no dirt around it. No raft did that. No paddleboard did that. No kayak did that. It is caused by the wakes of a jet boat. They have no business on the Upper River. Frankly, they have no business on the river, but we're never going to get there. Stream erosion on the Lower River is the same. I've hiked the Lower River Trail. I've watched encounters between people kayaking and jet boats. I've seen it on the Upper River multiple times. And somebody's going to die. At some point, they're going to have a wreck just like they had just down the Lower Rogue. You're going to have a jet boat come around, blind corner, and run somebody over. If you're in a raft, you can't cross the river in seconds. You can't. And if a jet boat comes around the corner and you're going to shoot, you're screwed. So my personal opinion, they shouldn't either. There is too many impacts, not just on the wildlife and the fish and the breeding salmon, but it's also the impact on everybody else that uses the river. Every rafter, every kayaker, every paddleboard is affected by a jet boat coming blasting by. Every fly fisherman is affected by a jet boat. I have, I have a drift boat. It has a 9.9 motor on it. And a 9.9 motor is far bigger than you need to push yourself up the river in almost any situation. I don't think you need a 15 horse, but whatever. You know. Not if you know what you're doing. But here we have boats with 400, 500 horsepower motors that can throw a weight 40 feet. Can't tell me that it does not disturb the river, the vegetation, everything there. So I urge you to restrict the river above the bridge to a 9.9 horse motor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our public testimony part of the meeting. We are adjourned.
Sorry, if I could, real quick.
Director Moore?
Sorry, Chair Jackson. No, no, you're trying to get us out here. The, I guess this is for the board, just as a reminder for next steps, is that we do still have public comment open on this issue. And you all do still have rulemaking open on this issue. We'll be talking about that on the October 23 meeting. So I would implore you that when you leave here today, other than thanking people for coming, that if they want to talk to you about any rulemaking or any potential rules, that you just direct them to submit their comments online to staff so that we can prepare that in a way that's the right way to do that with rulemaking. And, you know, again, I know everyone appreciates you all coming down here and giving your time today. And so just wanted to make sure that as you wrap up and head out today, that you just direct folks to do rulemaking things through, through the process of a comment. So, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well said. All right, we're adjourned.